Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluffing these four of all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his bluffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure Ace High, like Ace High has some showdow value. He had Ace five and when he raises the turn with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that, he actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands do you have if you're folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some misdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo got away from it. Ooh, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise the seventy-five hundred, his ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raises. So this kind of falls back at it, bro.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future sheets. And we, we were aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right.
That was the best dude to ever- you won. Straight up, this is fun.
You won, I, I, I just, yeah, I just.
Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this. You're not opening this.
Button cut off, high deck low jack, under the gun one.
Come on, I'll open it. I, um, so let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quit.
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, let's play.
I am going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes! I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three points score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold!
But you heard what he said.
Yes!
I'm off the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold, it says right here.
The excuses to open? If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life!
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King of Queens? Who in the- Who does that?
What the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my, my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through the things and, and so it's a good way to start your session for sure.
Alright, alright guys, this is it.
What's up, you wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Kauka's playing about deep hitting about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive in this, uh, ten dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise twelve hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight hundred and my man's given options twelve and fourteen hundred. So it's already getting, uh, kind of spicy.
That's so nasty to be on the site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too. You know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site, so very highly respectable quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well. You know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though, I thought that was interesting.
You didn't do that bad, forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The fact-
I agree, bro, I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know-
Calling, guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright, guys, we're checking, I guess. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward, you want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you going fourteen hundred?
I'm going fourteen hundred, guys.
I'm gonna go call with the armadillo hat.
Alright, and-
I would fold in game though, for the record, in case Assassin. We're winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, no, we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot, cause-
Damn it!
Mm-hmm. Where you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat?
They like, they like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do, uh, I can do a ten dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this, we'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man. And then, you know, we'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's tie.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each, each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten dollar ACR giveaway for this one. What up? We're here. We're here, we're here, we're here. It's time to get our learn on with the Poker Coaching Study Sessions stream. Sadly, we're gonna be running solo today. Uh, Six is doing the whole family thing. It's the holidays. You know how it goes. Um, so it'll just be me. We'll be hanging out, we'll be going through these quizzes. These quizzes are from pokercoaching.com. Uh, you can see the little banner underneath chat there with the little PC in the chat where you guys use that link, sign up, get at least the free option where you get twenty-five quizzes, a bunch of homeworks, pushfold charts, all for nothing. You get to see the schedule for a ton of free webinars, usually multiple webinars a week, um, by guys like Jonathan Little, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, myself, Crazy Sixes, Lexi, Gavin. And I'm gonna look it up so I don't mess up his damn name. Tristan Wade, right? Tristan Wade. Tristan, I'm sorry. We got it, Tristan Wade. Should write it down. Uh, he's the new coach. And, uh, did I say Evan Jarvis? Evan Jarvis as well, Gripped. Um, so yeah, good content, good coaches, good stuff. That part's available free. If you are so inclined, you can sign up for the paid option where you get over six hundred and fifty, looks like, six? Six hundred and fifty-eight quizzes and more homeworks and challenges and all these other awesome opportunities. There's a Black Friday sale going on right now. So make sure you, uh, check that out. Let me be fucking smart and have the Black Friday link for you. I'll do that. Groot, my man. Good to see you, buddy. It's been a little, a little while. Happy holidays, man. Hope you have a nice, safe, fun holiday. Hope you're stuffed full of turkey, my man. Hope you're staying warm. Thanks for stopping by, guys. Thanks for stopping by. Let's up the sub goal for that one because it counts. So I don't forget, twelve oh five. Alright, guys, let's kick these off, huh? Let's kick these off. While the first quiz is running, I'll get that Black Friday sale link for you in case you guys are interested in checking that out. Um, alright, so let's stick to some tournament stuff because, you know, that's the wheelhouse and all. Uh, one cool thing about the site too is like tons, I mean, this is just since last week. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven quizzes since last week. Good, I don't know why I was thinking. I know you're on Florida, live near the beach because you were running from the hurricane. I was just thinking east coast. So it's nine AM, goddammit. Sorry, TJ. Alright, I'm gonna be a little erotic here and I think we're gonna start by filling in some of these blanks. It's a little too early to just jump in with Assassinato though. We're gonna have to warm up to him. Uh, how about this? Let's do a little Jonathan Little quiz, huh? See how this is gonna go? Boy, maybe this Jonathan Little quiz is broken. Nope, it's not.
Here we have Ace, Nine.
You stop that. Uh, let's get it set up. Uh, so basically the way it's working, this is your first time hanging out. Uh, what we'll do is we'll watch the quiz and listen to whichever coach we're listening to, figure out what they gotta say about the situation. Uh, you can see the options right down here. Fold, call, raise seven fifty or raise ten fifty. It's gonna be super interactive. I wanna know what you guys would do. I'll let you know what I would do. Figure out what's right based on the coach's opinion and we'll go from there. Alright, so this is a one thousand dollar buy-in, Seminole Hard Rock Poker Open, which is right in Groot's neighborhood. Um, so let's play this up and, uh, see what happens.
Here we have Ace, Nine, offsuit. In the cutoff seat, everyone folds to us. Should we fold? Call? Raise to seven hundred fifty or raise to one thousand fifty?
Uh, Martin's been hunting there twenty-nine years ago. Sadly, me and Mrs. Tug have never been on our honeymoon. We spent every cent we had getting married. Been chasing that dream ever since. Alright. Seven fifty says Wisco. Um, seven fifty from Dr. Hand. Seven fifty from the Marlin. Seven fifty from Ginger, she's up early. What's up, Ginger? What's going on here? Seven fifty for every, ah, ah, fold says King of Deuces. That kept me sitting. So you're really folding there, King of Deuces? That's too nitty. You have an ace in late position, let's party! Position is power. You're gonna get through the button a lot. Uh, and then we're, we got position. Position is power. Uh, seven fifty for sure. Alright, let's check it out.
With a seventy-five big blind stack, I think it's perfectly fine just to raise to about two and a half big blinds in this scenario, which would be seven fifty. You could also make it nine hundred if you feel inclined. Um, if there are shorter stacks get to act, I think seven fifty or even seven hundred or six fifty may be better. But this is a pretty standard spot to make a normal-sized raise. The problem making a bigger raise is that when you get called, you start to be in kind of marginal shape. Whereas when you raise smaller, you get called by a lot of worse stuff. So small blind and big blind both call. Flop comes, Ace, Nine, Five. Couldn't have drawn it up better. And they check to me. Should we check? Bet one thousand one hundred? Bet two thousand two hundred? Or bet three thousand three hundred?
Alright, cool. We got the leader. Uh, flop two pair, checks to you, what's the plan? King of Deuces says eleven hundred and twenty-six fifty. Groot's out there with eleven hundred. Martin says bet the nuts, but doesn't say a price. Wisco's eleven hundred. The whole army out there putting eleven hundred. Dr. Hand, eleven hundred. Uh... Ginger, eleven hundred. Early, halfway through her day, she says, uh, I'm on the west coast. It's nine AM. It's early. We were too busy hitting that second place last night. We didn't get to bet till like one thirty, my time. Probably eleven hundred, but couldn't get behind twenty-two hundred. Tell me about that, Marlin, why twenty-two hundred? Drug says eleven hundred, but go a tad more. That's interesting because I actually think I would go a tad less. Um, I find this board a little dry. Um... And so for that reason, I would go like nine hundred, nine fifty personally. Um, there's like, I don't know, Ace, Nine, Seven, Two Spades, something like that, where there's a bunch of combo draws and things. Then yeah, I mean, I would definitely go bigger. Uh, but here, I think it's pretty dry. Anyways, coming along for sure, absolutely. Um, also, uh, but we're talking more than that, right? Like we still want pocket eights to float for one, pocket sevens to float for one, things like that, right? Maybe something sticky like six, seven a club, six, seven a diamond, six, seven a spades, got a gut shot and a backdoor, stuff like that, right? We don't wanna press that stuff out. Cool, I'm with the eleven hundred. Let's check it out.
Well, we definitely have the best hand here essentially every time. We are loving the spot. So we have to figure out how much to bet. We do not wanna check because if we check, well, first off, whenever you're slow playing, you wanna ask, can my opponent catch up to a hand that they think is good, that also I still beat? And the problem with slow playing here is that, like, what are you trying to get action from? Like imagine our opponents have Queen, Jack offsuit, right? That, that are just gonna fold to a bet. If they do peel a queen or a jack on the turn, it's not like they're gonna lose a ton of money, right? But if your opponent does have an ace and you just bet flop, bet turn and bet river, you can get a substantial amount of money in the pot. So slow playing is very often a bad idea, even on a kind of dry board. And, you know, we're not gonna get a ton of action on this board just because we block top pair and middle pair. But think about it, if the opponent has like five, uh, four threes of spades, I really don't wanna let them see a, uh, a free turn, right? Because if they get the two, then I'm just gonna lose a ton of money. And, uh, you know, sure, they may bluff the turn and river if they feel inclined, but that's kind of optimistic multi-way, right? So anyway, don't slow play. So now the question becomes, how much should we bet? And this is a situation where we definitely have a range advantage. Uh, most likely have a range advantage. Small blind could have a strong range depending on their strategy. Um, but the board is very uncoordinated. So when we are betting on an uncoordinated board in general, we just wanna go for a small bet. So I like eleven hundred. I don't think a big bet is good because if we bet big and get, well, just everything's gonna fold. And obviously, we're gonna get called by an ace if we do bet big, but we're gonna get called by an ace anyway and a small bet will generally keep our range wider in our opponent's eyes. So we do bet eleven hundred. Now, small blind raises two thousand eight hundred. Should we fold? Call? Rerace to seven thousand two hundred? Or go all in?
Tried to do the math there in my head there. Uh... Groot saying call, were you jumping ahead of the gun there? Stick it to it. Uh, Martin says flat now. What do you guys think? I'm, uh, half conflicted. Call in position says King of Deuces. Seventy-two hundred says Drugs. Position is power. Call from Ginger. God. I have mixed emotions, man. Like everything in my soul is with Drugs. Says seventy-two hundred. Bet the nuts. We lose to pocket fives, block the shit out of pocket dimes. Um... Everybody on their calling. If we call here, there's gonna be ninety-five hundred or so in there. Yeah, so like if, uh, for me, I feel like if we could call here and then the opponent could jam, yeah, I could do it. I get that we wanna let him bluff. At the same time, uh... Trying to think if there's any scare cards on the turn. And I don't know that there is. So it's probably gonna barrel again as a bluff. And then the ace, we're gonna get value from anyway? Hmm. What's the merit of raising? Uh, I wanna get back, see, I guess I wanna get max value from his bare ace. Uh, so this would be a little different there, King of Deuces, I think. Um, this is to texting me. Uh... Uh, Ace, King, Ace, Queen, Ace, Jack. I would probably not go into call mode because I'm gonna fear more two pairs. Uh, ten or five is the worst turn. True, even though I wouldn't be scared of a five. Because what fives are he, is he three betting with, right? Like literally, eh, maybe with bottom pair on it, maybe. Um, I think we have the MTT easy play to stack off with ace six more than a higher buy-in. I think in the entities we play, they stack off with ace six more than a higher buy-in. Oh, uh, sure. This is a thousand dollar live tournament though, right? So like, I get this a thousand bucks, but it's probably equivalent to an eleven to twenty-two dollar tournament online, right? Um, I'm conflicted. My gut would be seven two hundred because then we can stack off. Um, and I think if we just call, we can't ever stack off. I think that's kinda what I'm doing. He shouldn't have Queens or Ace Ki- Ace, Queen or Ace, King, that's true. Uh, he didn't three bet three, right? Alright, so you guys have a bunch of calls. So I'm gonna click call for the army. I think I'm a Drugs though, I would go seventeen hundred myself. Um... Cause I wanna try and stack him. Let's find out. Keep his bluffs.
Well, now I definitely wanna do everything in my power to keep my opponent in the pot with all of his bluffs. Um, now, if he does have something like four, three of spades, notice that that hand's drawing very near dead. If I raise, he's just gonna fold. And, um, he'll, he's gonna feel very inclined to keep bluffing if he does have nothing on the turn. Um, so against the bluffs, we definitely wanna call. Obviously though, there shouldn't be a ton of bluffs in this spot just because there aren't very many obvious bluffs available. And I could have a lot of aces in my range, right? So I definitely think the opponent's range is tilted towards value, but like what are the value hands on Ace, Nine, Five? Well, it's gonna be pocket nines and pocket fives, right? Maybe Ace Five. The opponent probably only has Ace Five suited, so there's only one combination of Ace Five suited, right? Um... Is that right? No, Ace of Cl- Ace of Clubs, Five of Clubs and Ace of Hearts, Five of Hearts. So two combinations of that. Um, Ace Nine is, you know, clearly not very likely as well. But, um, so there's two combinations of Ace Five suited. But then there are three combinations of pocket fives and one combination of pocket nines. So there's actually more hands that obviously makes sense to value that we lose to than we beat. So we don't really wanna bloat the pot against those hands either, right? So reraising doesn't really accomplish a whole lot in this scenario besides making the pot bigger when I'm in probably bad shape. And, um, clearly if your opponent does have Ace Five, we're gonna stack them anyway. And if you has, you know, pocket fives, we're gonna get stacked. So in this scenario, really, we just wanna make sure we keep bluffs in. Now, if your opponent will raise a hand like Ace, Jack on the flop and then just keep blasting it on the turn, then, um, you know, sure, right? If, if, uh, it, it makes sense to call in that scenario too. If they are going to raise Ace, Jack and then just never fold, maybe it makes sense to go ahead and reraise and just get all the money in. But most people for seventy-five big blind stacks are not gonna just jam their stacking with Ace, Jack offsuit here. Alright, turns a ten of spades, opponent bets six thousand. Should we fold? Call? Raise to twelve thousand? Or go all in?
TJ says, uh, his tournament is at least four K plus, so thirty K a pot. Uh, we gotta shove on the turn. Uh, you're right, actually. I was basing it off my stack size, but you are a hundred percent right. Um, so yeah, call, obviously even better for that reason too. And he says rip it in his face. Not balancing your folding range there, Groot. Not figuring the fives. Uh... Anybody else? What else? I see one rip it. And one Seminole Ho- Hard Rock is soft as a- SHRPO is a bad acronym for poker place series, whatever you wanna call it. Because like, you gotta know when to go super high roller just because that's the way things work nowadays. You have to remember it's Seminole Hard Rock Poker. Uh, jam! Two jams. With a bunch of quiet people. All in! Everyone jamming. I can see jamming. I'm done. We got Ace Fives, raise ten, congrats. Indeed. I agree. Uh, we're behind in value on the flop, we're still behind, so we should call. That's a good argument, Drugs. Um... I guess the question is, is, in that argument, is he ever triple barreling as a bluff? I think that is less frequent. Right, man? So like now, he's either got an ace that he may or may not go broke with or air, right? I don't think he's... He's not calling on a bluff, but he's calling with any of his value that's like an ace and he's probably not tripling, right? Because when we call this, we have a ton of aces and so he can't possibly think he's gonna bluff an ace off. Right? So I guess the point is like, we don't get any more bluffs out of them after this. So now we could go for value, I think. Jonathan didn't get a bare ace though, that's true. All fair arguments, my man. Thought he had more values than aces. Cause he had more combos of nines and fives. And Ace Five? Everybody all in. I can't help myself, I'd be all in too. Alright, let's see if Drugs is the, uh, the voice of reason. We're gonna go all in. Beats, he likes to call Drugs.
Well, a random Ace Ten got there, which is always unfortunate. Again, I don't think your opponent's gonna have too many Ace, Queen, Ace, Jack, Ace, Ten type hands, but you never know.
I think he's up for tripling.
Backdoor spades are now available, but that's not that big of a deal because notice if the opponent did have a hand like four, three spades, they could also have four, three clubs and four, three diamonds, both of which just did not improve to a better draw on the turn, right? So this is a scenario again where I think I just wanna do everything in my power to keep my opponent in with his bluffs. The stacks are getting a little bit shallow now to the point that maybe we should jam. Because like if your opponent had, say the opponent does happen to have a spade draw, like a perfect spade draw, like four, three spades, I don't really care if he folds and if he does call it off, we're just getting money in ahead. So I think we need to pick between calling or jamming depending on what we think about our opponent's range. As our opponent's range is more reasonable, like just good draws and good made hands, I think we should be inclined to shove. But if the opponent's range is a little bit wider, a little bit weaker, maybe a little bit splashier, then, um, we need to be more inclined to call. Also, if the opponent does happen to have a hand like Ace, Queen, I really don't wanna raise and let them find a fold there, right? So I think I tend to call in this scenario, but like if the stacks were just a little bit shorter, I think I'd go ahead and put the money in. So we do call. River is the Jack of Spades. Backdoor draw gets there. And the opponent now bets eleven thousand. Should we fold? Call? Or go all in?
This is actually kinda fucked. Right, the backdoor spades got there. We were beating Ace Ten and Ace, Jack for two pair combos. And, uh... They both now got there. Don't like the river bet, yeah. Hey, what's up, Beats? Good morning, buddy. King of Deuces is calling. That's why I'm just calling on the turn, so it's good, Beat. Probably not good anymore, it's so bad. Drugs is fold, man! It's tough to find a hand we, we beat, huh, Drugs? I kind of agree with group, like this is why I'm jamming the damn turn. Shit, you're putting on seven, eight. Uh, the problem there is that uh, we gotta put him on a range of hands, right? Seventy would be in there assuming it was like seventy to spade, seventy to diamonds, seventy to clubs, agreed. But he also has a lot of Ace ten, Ace Jack. And then we beat Ace five. I don't know that Ace eight is doing this. That seems. Crazy. What bluffs he tripling? I'm having trouble finding one drugs. Beat only blushes, brothers, I'm. I kind of agree. This is ugly. I don't know what we beat. Already on the turn, but now you have to fold. Agreed. I think Ginger, I think you're right. Six, seven suited, yeah. I actually think you're right. I'm kinda on team drugs here. Team Sopranos. Seven diamonds and clubs, he is tripling. Agreed. Pretty small. Part of his range though. And that beats us, right? Seven, eight is straight, so yeah. Yeah, I don't say he bluffs. Ace Queen might do this. Agreed. Except Ace Queen didn't three bet his creed, right? Which. There's that. Duck Hand says four one call. Uh, this is true, except. What? We can't find his bluffs. I can't find his bluffs. Ace Jack plus, sure. Ace Jack, the question mark one, little three bet, little knot. Um, I think that's like the mixed frequency. Uh, but yeah, uh, Ace Queen for sure, right? Ace Jack a lot. Agreed, hundred percent. Ah, I think I'm folding, man. Yes, five, five next hand. Running, running, roll flush. I think he may have gotten like Ace ten or Ace Jack. Think the spade was a nail in the coffin. Wait, what percent do we need to be right to call? I mean. The thing is, like, we need to be able to find some bluffs and I can't find. I can't find any bluffs. Like I said, each eight, probably not doing this. He's saying wouldn't three bet, 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 bet. I don't think. Says this is annoying how to feel like it should have been more trobyos. Uh, jam the turn. Do you have the turn? So we don't have to make these hard decisions. We're not that, we don't have to be that smart. Alright, let's look at fold, see what happens. Eight.
Well, definitely don't go all in. Um, going alone would be awful. You definitely want to conserve that extra fourteen hundred chips if. We happen to be beat. So now are we gonna?
So the thing about calling, here's my problem with the call too. It's like we call here, he says save the fourteen hundred chips. Which we're only gonna have. Like ten bigs behind. That's no problem. And we can't find the bluffs. Alright, let's see what he says.
Call or are we going to fold? And this is actually a pretty bad run out for me because we lose to Ace Jack and Ace ten, both of which are likely pre-flop hands. Um, Ace five may not even love their hand anymore, right? Um, pocket fives will still probably value bet, so this is actually kinda bad. I I'm, I I really have a. Pretty marginal bluff catcher at this point despite flopping two pair on a dry board. We do however, beat all the busted draws. Well, not all them actually. Um, notice eight, seven made it straight. Um, if our opponent had like King, Queen, which you know, pretty unlikely, but if they did have King, Queen, we lose to that too. But we do beat um, seven, six suited. If the opponent has that, maybe the opponent does, maybe the opponent doesn't. Notice that this opponent. Is way less likely to have like four, three suited than. Uh, the big blind, the big blind's gonna have all of those, right? Where a small blind probably doesn't call that kinda stuff pre-flop. Um, you never know though. Again, who who knows what's actually happening early in a thousand dollar tournament in Florida. People, people love to splash around. Really what it amounts to is I'm just not folding this. In a random a thousand dollar tournament, cuz I think people overvalue a little bit too much and just may feel inclined to bluff. Now, the sizing is actually kind of interesting because some people will always bet non-all in like this with. Either bluffs or nuts, but clearly I have no way of knowing that, given that we are early in this tournament. So I lean towards calling here, recognizing we're losing a lot of the time, but I only need to be good. Um, twenty five percent of the time, right? So am I good twenty five percent of the time, like?
Uh, the problem here is that Jonathan's too fucking rolled, like that soft twenty five K from last week. It's like, I'm just not folding the thousand dollar tournament here, you know, like, we're not gonna be good here a whole lot, but fuck. Reback table six.
I just am. I'm probably good like thirty or thirty five percent of the time and you know, that's not a lot. People often ask me like, do you call off in these spots where you think you are? You know, they they call it flipping or roughly flipping and the thing is, is that. That's a pretty nice overlay. If I'm gonna actually win thirty three percent of the time. But I only need to win twenty five percent, that is a pretty big edge, so I'm gonna call. And the opponent randomly had King of Clubs, Queen of Spades, so. Seeing this makes me like really like my call because now the opponent's just really getting after it, right? I think that flop check raise is awful. Um, King, Queen in this scenario is probably just a fold on the flop. It's perfectly fine just to check fold here. Depends on how the opponent structures their range. Again, like if, I guess if they have no eight, sevens or seven, six suited.
Literally the worst.
I mean, I think you'd still rather just check raise with something like Jack ten of clubs or. You know, Jack, Jack ten of diamonds or Queen ten of diamonds, something like that. So interesting hand selection and this time I got punished.
It's a good one. That was a good one. Alright guys, that was a nice little warm up. We got the brain movement. Good, we jam the turn. So this guy folds, we win this pot, we rule, still got a thousand dollars. Alright, let's see, uh, what else we got here? What else we got? If there are any, um. Shit, premium or not members out in the chat, you would prefer to do a particular quiz, uh, let me know. Um, in the meantime, I'll pick one for now and then if we got an audience suggested one, we'll uh, we'll jump on that one after this one. Uh, ah, cool. Let's see here, gonna be. But a little man I have whack and then we'll jump into assassin auto and melt our brains. Pocket fives, this is a thirty five hundred dollar WPT tournament. Two one of sixes, uh. He only has the one on the site right now. It's uh, he's actually due to get another one uploaded. I know he made eight. Um, yeah, anything with ICM consideration. Are you talking about the Ace nine hand group? Cuz I think we were like sixty something, I mean like mid, early mid stages in tournaments or no ICM. Consideration there, we're talking about Ace nine. Uh, do something from heaven, uh, we can do that. Act like we got going right now. What do we have in Jarvis next? Probably be a cash game one, so we're gonna be a little out of my depth, so that should be fun. We could check raise by King, Queen. We got check raise, yeah. And then he barreled the turn. Hoping to get like. I don't know. Pocket Kings and under the full. Oh, something with ICM considers, oh, to go there, oh, okay, okay. I love that. That's kinda like my, my special wheelhouse. I did a lot of work on ICM. Alright, let's uh, we'll play this one. We'll do an Evan Jarvis cash game one and then we'll jump over to. Uh, something with ICM, which is gonna be a necessity another one, cuz we got a bunch of final tables right now. Uh, King of Deuces, Dennis OPC was fun. Uh, you can check out, I got a little highlight reel about the whole situation over here on the YouTube channel. So uh, cheap little uh, whoring of myself there for you. Also on the YouTube channel. Uh, I record all of these studies that's exchanged, so you can go back and watch every one we've ever done. And check out the quizzes from that. Those are on the YouTube channel as well. Check those out along with the highlight reel stuff like we can see here. Um, for WSP circuit, for WSOP. Last summer, for all the online ones, I got another one that I'm probably gonna put out today for highlights. I'm actually backed up. I got enough highlight reel stuff to like, till the world blows up, especially the last few weeks, cuz we've been crushing it. Uh, ah, let's see this.
Alright, everyone, today we're, today and for the next few hands, we're gonna start looking over a few hands from the thirty five hundred. WPT main event at Seminole Hard Rock that I played. Uh, this hand is from early levels, we're playing one hundred, one hundred blinds with forty thousand in chips, so four hundred big blinds, very deep stack. Under the gun player makes it three hundred. The cutoff player calls, we have pocket fives on the button. Should we fold? Call, re-raise to twelve hundred or re-raise to fifteen hundred?
Pocket fives with a raise and a call, who's getting crazy? Fold call, raise to twelve hundred or raise to fifteen hundred? What's the army got to say? Limp along with fives, Sopranos. Like call or fifteen hundred? Uh, okay, call, call. Call getting fifteen to one or more. What's up, Chad? Good morning, buddy. This is Zach Turney is going on right now, Affleck Bag. This is probably from the one before, I imagine, or playing it again. Only because I was hanging out with Affleck at the circuit event and I don't think he made this quiz so quickly. Uh, but yeah. Call, call, we're looking for back, call, 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 it's higher than fifteen hundred. That'll be ID also squeeze can work with short stacks. I don't see the reason to squeeze at this point. Uh, you know what I mean? Cool. Um, yeah, yeah, I'm kinda my team call too. Fifteen hundred is interesting for sure. Excuse me, and I know as we're super deep, we should be three betting these pairs. More, so I definitely don't hate the squeeze. I think fifteen hundred would be the right size if you do that. I'm more of a. You know, gonna call and and get my own type of guy, but I can definitely see the fifteen hundred. Uh, particularly if they're. I mean, the raise is under the gun, but he's an aggressive pro. Alright, most people said call, let's call and check it out.
Here, I mean, the completely standard play here is to call. Um, I think calling is just standard. We got a small pocket pair. Plays well multi-way, we're in position on the button. Uh, everything kinda points to a call. I do give a little bit of merit to squeezing to twelve hundred. Or to fifteen hundred, very little. I gave twelve hundred a score five and fifteen hundred a score two. Only because we're super deep stack, four hundred big blinds deep. It gives us some board coverage, so when we three bet and the board comes, you know. Three, five, seven, or four, five, six, or five deuce, deuce, you know, we have some of those nutted hands on the low boards. But in general, we're just gonna wanna call here ninety plus percent of the time. Maybe even more than that, maybe ninety eight percent. Uh, we end up calling on the button and the big blind calls and it comes seven, five, three rainbow. And it checks to us. Should we check? Bet five hundred, bet eight hundred or bet twelve hundred?
What's up KB? Good to see my man. Morning buddy. Thanks for the sub, homie. We out here eighteen months. Good to see my man. That's on your OSS win the other day. Yay, I love flopping sets, he says. What's the plan? Check and be sneaky multi-way? Bet small, five hundred. Bet pretty big, eight hundred, bomb the hell out of it. One says five hundred. Who's us out there? What you got? Five hundred for Jackpot, five hundred for Beats? Five hundred for drugs. Group split the difference going six hundred. King of Deuces says, better nuts, eight hundred. Endgame, I bet nine fifty, but this is eight hundred, um. Buck D T L eight hundred, five hundred. Lots of five hundreds and a couple few eight hundreds. Um, I'm on definitely eight hundred myself. I'm probably five hundred betting third pot here. One, we're super multi-way. And so in super multi-way, I consider this a relatively wet board. There's lots of straight combos. Four or six. Both kinda weird cards on the turn. And I did say we get value, like anything that's gonna call, a bet here is gonna call big bet. They're gonna call it all. Um, twelve hundred seems a little too big. I'm definitely on team eight hundred myself. And quarter pot, like our third pot rather, we're just like, I know we're keeping them wide. But I don't think like King, Queen is just gonna randomly float here, right? Maybe some ace highs. Um, ace high combo draws, ace six, ace two, ace four. Maybe it's eight. I'm definitely on team eight hundred. Alright, um. Jim Foe going crazy this morning. Alright, so one, two. Two eight hundred, one, two, three, four. We'll go five hundred with the army, but I'm definitely betting larger on this board. Let's see what happens.
We definitely need to be betting here with our middle set. We're gonna get a lot of value. Um, don't need a lot of protection, but we wanna start building a pot. The stacked pot ratio is around thirty, so we need to be betting here and starting to build a pot. Uh, multi-way in these spots, you normally wanna be betting smaller. Um, just because it's hard to have enough equity to be betting. Um, there's an aggressive pro, a couple locals, don't know much about them, so probably going to. I think betting eight hundred, um, a little over half pot is the best bet. Um, if we had a hand like pocket eights, we want protection against like King, Queen suited, King, Jack suited with backdoor flush draws. We wanna get those types of hands to fold. So with our range, I think betting eight hundred is the best option. I think betting five hundred is also a really good option. Um, betting twelve is a good option for our hand. Our hand is certainly worth a twelve hundred chip bet. With pocket fives here, but hands like uh. Seven, eight suited or pocket eights that we wanna be betting, really, it's hard to. I don't think they're really worth a twelve hundred chip bet here. Um, they're probably, our range wants to be betting eight or five hundred, so. I prefer to do that with our strong hands as well. We bet five hundred and the small blind, well, the big blind raises to two thousand. Folds back to us. Should we fold, call, re-raise to five thousand or re-raise to seven thousand?
What? Three bet. The hell? We're running for our lives. He's got a straight, uh, calling. Let's say, oh, YOLO, re-raise to five thousand or super YOLO. Go to seven K. What do you guys think? Uh, big blind range. This does hit the big blinds range. A yikes call from King of Deuces. Call from drugs. Uh, let him hang himself, set versus set. We'll be getting it in anyways, Sopranos. Uh, checking out there with the call. What's up, buddy? Good to see you out there in chat. Marlin call. Uh, I'm on team call myself. Um, because if I, if I raise this and he re-raises it again, like. Bites out there with the call. Good morning, Bites. Ginger, everyone's calling. Yeah, I I just don't wanna get raised again. He's got other sets, like sevens, threes great, and then he still has things like four, six suited. Excuse me. And then he's got things like six, eight suited for sure, uh, pocket eights. Maybe pocket nines, maybe pocket tens. Four, six and six, eight? Yep, 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 absolutely. Alright, so everyone's going call, let's see what happens.
I think calling is the best option here by quite a bit. Being in the big blind, he has probably sixteen combos of straights. He might pee and maybe should be folding six, four off, but I think a lot of the uh, weaker players are going to be calling six, four off here. So he probably has sixteen combos of straights and he also has all the combos of pocket sevens. Really, if we get it all in here for say forty thousand chips, it's gonna be against like pocket threes. Maybe pocket sevens and six, four, and we're really not doing that. We only dominate one of those hands. Um, pocket sevens, I think would be a more clear raise because then we can set over set pocket fives and pocket threes versus fives. Um, it's kind of a coin flip whether he has the bigger set or the smaller set and. Counting his straight options, I think calling is the best option. Um, re-raising to five thousand though, we do have some, you know, it's not like if we raise, we're gonna get all the money in. I think raising to five thousand, being in position, getting some value out of his like semi bluffs, like seven, six suited, nine, eight suited, he might continue with. Uh, Ace seven with a backdoor flush draw, like there's still hands if we re-raise to five thousand, he'll call with, we'll get value out of, so I think there is some merit to the small raise. Um, not as much to the big raise though, as those weaker hands that we'd get value from would be folding. We call. We call and the turn is the deuce of diamonds. And our opponent bets twenty-seven hundred. Should we fold, call, raise to seventy-five hundred or raise to ten thousand, two hundred?
Ace five, ace four does this, ace six, good combos. Absolutely, absolutely. So funny, when I know someone in chat personally, I always like brain skip. Group TJ, group TJ. If I say TJ, no one else knows who the hell I'm talking about. Two calls in chat. GTA call. Ace five doesn't do this. Maybe not. I was kind of thinking like ace three is kind of an okay combo to do this with. Like, I would like it better if it was like king five, three. And I had ace three. Um, I could definitely see doing this in that scenario. Seven, five, three. Gets a little awkward from the big lines range. Ace four gets there indeed. Uh, four, six also got there. Bice raising to seven, five hundred. She's not skirted. Calm down unless the river's a five. Uh, I would say for board pairs, probably a good thing too. Soprano would raise at this point. Why, buddy? What changed? What changed between here and the flop? Six, four has been there. Could call Wisco. Bonus point for Wisco. I would call too. I don't think anything changed. Um, he's either got the straight or a better set or whatever. Or those eights and nines and whatever. Um, yeah, so I'm gonna call. I think calling is our only option. I don't think anything's changed. Let's see what happens. I'm with you guys.
Again, here, I think calling is the best option. Folding is certainly out of the question. I like calling. Um, my reason I like calling over the two raise options is I'm worried if we raise, we only we fold out a lot of hands and we isolate ourselves against a range of six, four, pocket sevens and pocket threes. Um, additionally, now the villain could have a hand like ace four suited that check raised the flop as a bluff. That made a straight now. Um, the one thing though going for us is now he's only bet half pot, which tends to make me think he doesn't have the straight of six, four, so I'm a little more inclined to raise now on the flop or on the turn than I was on the flop because of his bet sizing. Using a half pot sizing, um, he can be doing that with more hands like, say, seven, five, five, three. Maybe even doing it with like pocket nines or tens for protection, so. But I think all those hands are gonna fold if we raise, so, uh, I want to keep those weaker hands in and I think I like the call. Do you call? River's the ten of spades. Our opponent checks. Should we check? Bet forty-five hundred, bet seventy-two hundred or bet ten thousand?
Checks the river. What I'm doing is not on this board. I'm gonna exploit the shit out of this one. Uh, what hands do we get value from that check raised bet turn? Forty-five hundreds is grouped. Seventy-two hundred from Beats and from Dr. Hand. Uh, overpair and one pair of hands do this. Agreed. Forty-five hundred, forty-five hundred. I'd bet high, super plus. I'm betting six K, but that isn't there. Hmm, interesting. Seventy-two hundred, ten eight from Wisco, team toe member. Ten eight from GTO. Uh, betting fifty-five hundred, I am gonna bet like thirteen K here. Personally. Um, because I think all those bluffs are just folding, doesn't matter. I think all the two pairs out there and then a hand like ace seven are calling that bet. Uh, and then everything else is folding. I would overbet this for sure. Screaming like my blood is boiling. I'm like, thirteen thousand. Uh, so I love that. Love it, love it, love it, love it, love it, love it. Um, given this is Man Affleck and the choices that we have, I guess that puts me at the ten eight. Um, I like ten eight or seventy-two hundred better than forty-five. Cause I just think we can get more value than forty-five personally. Um, seventy-two, 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 seventy-two. I'm looking at the dealer pissed off and saying all in like the like the quiz from last week. I'm with you, Wisco. I got it, I got it. I know he's gonna bet smaller, he got straight. Agreed. Never checks the river with a straight. You just want to get value from his random sevens and two pairs. He's got a lot of two pairs. Hundred two pairs. Try to five, three, seven, five, stuff like that. Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, alright, so looks like there are more so if he's slow played aces, even great, then he's definitely gonna call the big bet, right? Uh, let's see. One, two, two seventy-twos, one, two, three forty-fives. Three and three, four and three, five, six and three. Alright, seventy-two hundred is, uh, got the majority here. I'm kind of leaning that way a little bit. Uh, based on the quiz, I like to overbet here for sure. We want to overbet when we have nuts in range and he doesn't. Uh, he's not the BB, so not the best overbet spot. The thing about this is that he check raise flop bet turn, which screams strength, which means that he's gonna call here a lot, but he doesn't have the nuts because he never checks the straight in the river, right? Uh, because he doesn't want us to check back a hand like ace seven, pocket eights, pocket nines. Um, things like that. So we can take this super strength out of his range now, but he's still got all the two pairs and hands that he's been out of. Crap, I'm late. Better late than never, though. No, I'm not like, I overbet. That's the price we pay. Listen, sometimes you're the toe, sometimes you get toe. It's just the name of the game. Uh, we're gonna go seventy-two hundred because that's what most people did. Uh, ten eight is technically an overbet. Bonus star there for Soprano. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I love the overbet here. Let's go seventy-two hundred and see what happens. Good job, guys.
Here, I think a bet is for sure in order. Once he's checked, I think he's got one of those weaker hands that we talked about, maybe an ace seven, pocket eights, pocket nines. Seven, five, maybe he's getting a little scared of pocket threes now, but I really just don't expect to see six, fours, pocket sevens anymore. Um, I really like betting seventy-two hundred about three quarters pot, um, because his range is a little weaker. Um, I don't know if I want to be betting much bigger because I don't know if they can call a huge bet. Um, betting forty-five hundred, I think our hand is just worth a lot more than that and our range is worth more than that. Um, and betting ten thousand, eight hundred, I think is a full pot bet. And definitely reasonable, especially if you have any read that your opponent's a calling station. I have no problem with the, uh, pot size bet as well. We bet seventy-two hundred and our opponent folds.
So my argument here too is like, this is a thirty-five hundred dollar live tournament, so in a thirty-five hundred dollar live tournament, the skill level there should definitely be a bit better. Um, the versus like a thousand dollar live tournament, you're gonna get a lot of weak players, even in a thousand dollar live tournament. Um, thirty-five hundred dollar live, we try to get better players. Um, if you are playing like fifty-five and under online, fucking overbet it. Oh, I mean, you are missing mad, mad value. But not overbetting in those tournaments for sure. Fallon, good morning. Thanks for hanging out. Good to see you. Good to see ya. Alright guys, let's, uh, what'd we say? We said we're gonna go to Evan Jarvis and then find Evan, uh, a, uh, a, uh, ICM one. Um, so Evan Jarvis is gonna be in the cast section here. Uh, a little one, three. Let's try and find like an interesting hand. How about ten eight suited, huh? Let's do this one. Little Evan Jarvis. Little cash game. Then we'll hop over to something ICM. Let's roll. Uh, what overbet bluffs do I run that board? Me? Uh, more than you would think. Uh, you check that board. I'm turning bottom pair and all my missed draws into an overbet bluff on the for the exact same reason where it's weak and I'm gonna get a shitload of folds and then sometimes I'm gonna get called by two pair. But because he checked the river, I'm gonna get a shitload of folds. Um, so those are what I would bluff, but I would think that I am the exception, not the rule, uh, which is why I do it. Um, but yeah, that is definitely one of my sneaky little plays and I'm a savage. Like, you know, for me, my general style, like, I'm not nitty. Um, but I don't play as wide of a range as my partner creates sixes in general. Um, he, our style difference is why we, why we do these studies, why we work a lot together off-stud. We study together twenty or so hours a week. And the reason why we work together so well is that he is more of a, play a lot of hands and bet really small and it's kind of death by a thousand cuts. And I play a tighter range than he does, even though I'm not super nitty. I do play a tighter range than he does and then I make it fucking hurt. Uh, and I'm gonna make you show me the nuts. I'm gonna make it hurt. And I'm gonna do that with my bluffs and I have to do it with a value balance. And that's kind of how I, how I make it happen. Uh, so yeah. Alright, let's play this thing. Uh.
Hello, everyone. Evan Jarvis here for pokercoaching.com. Today we are reviewing a one from a session I played on a Sunday afternoon at Casino Niagara. We've been at the table for about half an hour now, developed some reads. Uh, we got a fan, we got a chatty fan and we have a tight recreational player. And a bunch of people we don't know. So got a limp from early position, small raise from the tight wreck to ten. Call from the fan who's, he's actually sitting a bit deeper than this and he's playing pretty well. Give the guy a lot of credit, solid player. Button calls, actions on you in the small blind. Raise two calls ahead and a limp. What should you do with ten eight suited? Fold, call, raise to thirty or squeeze to fifty?
Interesting. For me, I'm out. Oh god, too much action. Uh, but I am not the cash game player. I do see the fact that we have a hand that flops pretty well. Um, but we're out of position, which is one thing that bugs me and it's gonna be hard. I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess we can just pocket control our draws and go from there. I mean, it's fully, alright, cool. I don't feel so bad. Uh, group says, I raise or fold, small by strategy. Uh, potentially squeezing, huh? So this is interesting, um, and this is gonna sound weird and it sounds weird when I say this, so there's an asterix. So listen, you know, I'm not that into it. We, but in a weird world, I do have fans and I have played with fans before. And so for me, when I do that, or even friends, um, it's always like one of two wings for me. It's, oh, I want to get in every hand and try and outplay toe or this is toe and I'm just gonna stay away from them. And so I gotta figure out who you are. And, and play accordingly, right? So I think Grips here is in a similar situation. And I just don't think raising is gonna get any folds when you're playing against fans. Cause they want that story so bad. So I'm kind of not, uh, personally thinking it's more call than raise here. Although in general, I kind of like your strategy there, TJ. But would change a lot? Absolutely. Uh, I agree, it's part of a lot. Raise thirty says Beats, call, says Fallon. Is this online or live? I believe this is live, one, three, cash. I believe. Uh, call it for sure, three and a half to one. Joe did get his bounty yesterday when I was playing the bankroll challenge. Uh, you can also get raised again and then what? Call is not a good hand to three bets, says Dr. Hand. Alright, cool. I'm gonna call, I guess. Uh, everyone's terrible position. I fold. I hate playing a small blind. King Deuces, I agree. Um, I don't hate playing the small blind. But I hate playing a small mind in this spot. So I'll give you that one. Uh, let's see what happens. Call is good.
In this particular situation, I think we're leaning between three betting to the large amount and calling. Uh, folding seems not so good when we have a very playable hand, multi-way situation. Yes, we're in the small blind, but the investment is very small to see the flop and we're gonna be able to navigate these waters very skillfully. We are skilled poker players. Um, squeezing to thirty doesn't really accomplish much other than building the pot out of position with a drawing hand. We don't want to do that. Um, so thirty's out of the question, fold's out of the question as well. Squeezing a fifty is a solid option. Um, the tight player probably has something okay, but given that he only made it ten instead of making it fifteen or twenty, he's probably not that strong. And the two players who called are probably pretty weak too. So squeezing a fifty is probably gonna get the job done pretty often and if not, it's gonna get us heads up with a hand that does have some playability post-flop. Um, so that's, that's a play that has a lot of merit in this situation. And then the final option, which I quite like, is just calling, taking a flop. You know, playing it one, two, three, four, five, six ways in a spot where we've invested very little pre-flop and we can decide post-flop on good boards if we want to put in a lot, or if we just want to get out of harm's way, keep our investment to a minimum on the times we miss. So this is one of those times where we don't miss. Queen nine, seven, giving us an open-ended straight draw. Be nicer if the nine was a diamond, but hey, we're still in a pretty good situation. What should you do? Should you check, lead out for half pot or lead out for full pot?
Okay, Fallon, so I had something to say about this because I do agree that it's okay sometimes to make let, let's say, not to make, but to play negative EV hands. Um, if you think that your post-flop edge will make up that difference. And I think that not you in particular, I just think that the general public greatly overestimates how much of a skill edge they have to make up the difference in playing negative EV spots, negative EV hands. Um, I don't know how negative this one is multi-way, but I think that is a big problem with a lot of players who play too many hands in general, cause, uh, I think if you play a more sound pre-flop strategy, plus have a skill edge post-flop, that is the recipe for the biggest success, in my opinion. Uh, but I mean, if you're just fucking, uh, I don't know, jungle man or like Haxton, you're just at some random home game and you're destroying folks, I mean, shit, play every game. Absolutely. Uh, we just put ourselves in tougher spots with marginal hands, terrible marginal positions. Yes, I agree. Um, that's why I kind of like the button better. Cause at least then I'm playing a marginal hand in position and then I have skill edge and positional edge and now I'm double whammy. Um, I agree with that. Hundred percent, hundred percent. I don't think we should be leading out here either. I think we just check and move on. Pretty standard here. See what kind of action we face. Yeah, so let's go.
Sometimes leading out with draws is a good play. Um, generally, that's gonna be more so when you're three-handed to a flop. Maybe four-handed to a flop. The problem with leading out into five people is that there's a good chance someone is connected with this board and if they've connected with this board, they may not continue by just calling. They may continue by raising and now the price is not gonna be also right. And it's gonna be very expensive for you to see a turn card. So I think that while leading out in some cases is a valid play. In this case, it's just suboptimal. It's not the best play. If I were to lead, I like leading for a smaller size, um, so I can hopefully call a raise, but, and I'm building the pot. In the case where they just called, but overall, I just like checking here, giving away no information, seeing what happens. And the tight recreational fires a C bet twenty-five into sixty. We're getting a little bit better than three to one on our money. Still two players left hack behind. What should you do? Should you call, fold or raise to eighty?
Hmm, what do y'all think? Uh, facing twenty-five bets, refold, which is good, twenty-five into sixty. Uh, fold our draw, just call, raise to eighty. Ooh, automatically controversy. Call from Marlin, call from Fallon, raise from Soprano, Joe calling, Bice calling. How many blinds deeper we? Hundred and sixty-three picks. Raise to eighty and isolate, says Beats. Call, raise eighty, probably hit queen of spades. Though probably not getting that to fold, but raising here and betting turn, I would say, far more. Uh, you might get better hands to fold and this is pretty wet board on twenty-five, seems weak. Uh, no need to ISO. Uh, not folding, just calling. Yeah, we're never folding the draw here, right? So we can take that one out. So rest is call raise. For me, I, if I, for me personally, and, and again, I'm not the cash game player, but for me, if I can get it all in by like the turn, then I'm gonna check raise this jam turn. If I can't If I can't, I'm definitely gonna be more of a realize my equity kind of guy, so I'm kind of on team call. Uh, myself. Beast mode says call, rainbow flow. Uh, what do you do when he comes back over the top? Fold your draw or re-bye, fold. I'm not gonna push hundred and sixty-three bigs on a draw. We don't have backdoor diamond either, that would be much different, that's a good call Fallon, a hundred percent agree with that, absolutely. Uh, so we, let's, I see mostly calls, let's check it out.
With regards to folding, yes, we're not quite getting the right pot odds to call, but we're almost certainly getting implied odds to call. Uh, if our opponent has a legitimate hand and we improve on the turn, we're gonna be able to win a lot of money from him. If our opponent doesn't have a legitimate hand, even when we don't improve on the turn, if it goes check, check, we can bluff on the river. So there's lots of merits and value to continuing with this hand. As for calling versus raising, the only thing raising does is. Fold him off air if he's C betting air into six people, just don't see that being the case. And, um, potentially getting ourselves forced into an all-in situation. So raising has no real merit in this spot, calling is the clear best play. It's what we do, heads up to the turn, which is ginmus maximus, six of spades giving us the nuts. We check, he bets thirty-five, really small, like a quarter of the pot. He does not seem like he wants to put a lot of money in this pot. Um, but we've already got our implied odds paid off right there. So what should you do? Should you fold the nuts? Don't think so. Uh, should you call, raise to one oh five or go all in for two hundred and eighty effective?
He said, should we fold the nuts? I don't think so. He already took that option off the table. What if we wanted to balance our folding range? Like he just take this quiz of four choices down to three, we're already winning. Look at that, twenty-five percent better. Alright, so no folds, well hello nuts, hello my sweet. Check raise, hundred and five. Or go all in, uh, full day, gotta bounce rangers. It's important, you have to be fully balanced, um, to be GTO. Call off the dog, says Marlin. Reverse equity realization, that's right. That's right. He could have Jack ten and get there. Spotters raises. Raise all in, says Vice, um. Check raise to over pot like buck fifty. Uh, I would go, I'll tell you how much I would go, I'm not too far off from that myself, Fallon. How deep are we? Um, the problem is it's half a stack, right? I guess now that I'm looking at it. Yeah, I would go like one twenty-five-ish, uh, myself, uh, still over pot. Oh, and I guess current pot is one forty-five, sorry, it was one ten, he bet the thirty-five. So I guess I would go sliding in the pot, like three point five as well. Normally do, especially if you had the same amount of chips that I had, on the fact that he's got two forty-five, I go one twenty-two, it's a clickback for him. So kind of close to all in at that point. I don't think one fifty is bad by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, what if I, what if I, I guess I'm at one oh five. Because I think if I jam, he just folds all his air. And this bet did look a little weak, so I guess I don't want to find. Looks like most of you guys are one of five. If he had chips my size, like I said, I'd be one twenty-five out there with Fallon, one twenty-five and a, and a fist bump to Fallon, absolutely. Uh, he said didn't want to put more money in the pot, he did look a little timid, ninety-five, uh, that seems a little too small. But I mean, if one oh five is the option, you're betting ninety-five, it's not that far off. Alright, let's bet the one oh five and see what happens.
Even though with our opponent's bet sizing, he's not making it look like he has a hand that's all that strong. Um, if we just call here and check on the river, he's probably gonna check back all his weak hands. He's probably also not gonna bluff after we've called two streets. So the other option to try to get paid is to call and then lead out the river, which may get a hero call by like some goofy middle pair. But only if we make it really small. Um, if on the other hand, by the way, folding was out of the question, but you already knew that. If on the other hand, our opponent is doing some weird small sizing, I don't know why, cuz he's playing like a queen defensively. He still may call a raise and our goal, when we have the nuts in a spot where. We're either getting paid a lot or getting paid nothing, is to maximize our opportunities of getting paid a lot for the times our opponent does have a hand. So that means raising and I don't think it means raising all in. Because if he has a set or two pair and we raise, he might just go all in himself. And if he has queen jack, queen king, I don't know, nine, eight, nine, ten, spade, something's drawing pretty thin. He may call the smaller raise and then maybe talk himself into calling on the river cuz he's getting great pot odds. Or maybe not, but we get the extra hundred instead of, um, you know, not. So I like a hundred and five here. So if he calls, there's gonna be one seventy behind, there'll be two eighty in the middle, he's gonna be getting a great price on his money. He's gonna feel compelled to call, uh, with anything he called turn. Unfortunately, our opponent folds in this situation, but we still, we still got our implied odds. We still got the math in our favor and we gave ourselves a chance to get paid and that's what you gotta do in poker, just keep putting yourself in a position to get paid. And eventually, it will come in a very large amount.
Very nice, very nice, very nice. Alright guys. Sweet, alright, so let's, uh, kick it back to the lobby now, find that ICM spot for Groot. For ICM, we are gonna have to switch this up to cash game, I'm sorry, from cash game to tournament. What if I can search for ICM? I broke it. Alright guys. We're gonna do a little treat, cuz I just realized I have an interesting, um. I know of an interesting, uh, quiz. Hang on, that is specifically ICM. Hang on, let me find it. Let me find it, let me find it. Damn it, I was gonna do my own quiz, but my ICM quiz isn't up yet. Here are my two quizzes right here, that I just found on the site recently, damn. I was gonna do my own ICM quiz. I have a great hand, uh, that is massive ICM pressure, uh, with me versus Kelly Minkin at a final table online. Um, that's pretty phenomenal. Um, alright, so. Oh, this is still sorted by coach. Let me see if I can fix this. So it looks a little better. There we go, alright, cool. Alright, so finding. An ICM situation. Solid terrified, uh, heads up at a ten dollar MTT. It's not. What we're looking for, ends up at the MTT again, no ICM there. Ten dollar MTT heads up for the win, no ICM there. I don't know. Final three in a ten dollar tournament could have some ICM implications. Oh, here we go, ten dollar final table, oh shit, we did that one, damn it. We did that one, skip through here. Think we're gonna have to go with that three-handed one. Alright, let's find it. Final three in a ten dollar tournament, alright, it's assassin auto too, so it's gonna get crazy. Switch over to the quiz view. Tech search, devil man, hey, what's up, eat the cat, good to see you, man. Uh, crazy sixes is doing the family thing, it's the holidays, uh, so he couldn't make it today, he'll be back next week. Do I use ICMizer is, um, in my opinion, especially for like, considering all stakes of poker. The number one tool you should be using, ICMizer three, it's fantastic, it's expensive, you should save up for, Christmas is coming. Number one tool, absolutely. Um, if you start to go beyond and into more in-depth and higher buying stuff. Um, then pile is definitely the way to go, but for like, you know, fifty-five dollar tournaments and under, maybe thirty-three and under. I don't know that you necessarily need pile, ICMizer is a must, absolute. Pile, it's a pile. Very expensive, so over a thousand dollars. Alright, buy him up for Alex, please, yep, yep, alright, let's go.
So in this hand, you're in the final three of a ten dollar tournament on a large international site. You and everybody here have fought down from two thousand plus players, uh, to take the grand prize. You have ace three of diamonds in the big blind. It's folded to the small blind, the small blind limps in, the small blind has been kind of a skittish rag, he clearly knows his ranges. When you push back though, he's not liked it, but he hasn't done much about it. He has raised or folded here every single time the entire final table, you have eight point three million. Uh, every time it's been folded in, then the small blind, he's on one of those two options, this is his first limp. You, uh, the blinds are ninety K, one eighty K with a twenty K ante. Here, do you wanna check? Do you wanna raise to three sixty? Do you wanna raise to four hundred or do you wanna raise to four eighty?
There we go, uh, learning what it works, yeah, I mean exploring the, the secrets to making real money in this game is definitely finding good exploits. And, and attacking for sure, um, absolutely, agree. Uh, pile is a great tool, um, and, and the way I look at it, I always kind of use the matrix analogy. Um, I always say, you know, like, I like to use pile and know what GTO is. Uh, and that way, when I'm deviating, um, I know like how far I'm, I'm deviating based on. A number of dynamics, player type sizes, all that stuff, right? And so it's kind of like, the matrix analogy is you gotta learn how to see the matrix before you can bend the spoon, see how far you're bending it. Now, if you're just bending the spoon or you're bending it in a swirly swirl, you know, you might be going off the rails, but yeah, absolutely. Uh, pile is a great tool, I had it, it's great. Uh, alright, so what's going on here? Uh, homeboy limps, we're blind versus blind, uh, and the learning is never done. And the game is always changing, which makes what you need to learn ever changing, which is fun too, right? Um, check. From Mr. Group, raise to four eighty, check from ginger, raise to four hundred, button short, guys. Button is short. Uh, maybe bringing a V by raising, I switch to check, eat the cat, changing his mind, check from farmer, four eighty. First limp, what's up, he's trapping, ICM does matter here, no need to inflate, go broke. Forty, forty, three sixty, hey, what's up, okay, good to see you, buddy. Um, sorry, check, um, so I am going to be raising this myself, I just attack lips. And I'm gonna be going for eighty myself. If you check behind, I can't imagine that is too big of a mistake. But it did say it's his first lamp, I guess that's mildly concerning. But I don't like checking, I, I don't can't, I would, if I was grading a score, I would say four eighty would be a ten and checking would be like an eight. So definitely not a mistake, in my opinion. Uh, pretty close, you block aces in that position, but raising gonna apply pressure, agree. Uh, why so high? Cuz we're blind versus blind and I want to charge him. Something, I want to give him the odds to call with like, any two cards, right? So blind versus blind, I'm always gonna go like, well, somewhere between two point five and four X. I'm playing on the scenario, um, here I would lean bigger, um, in position with the, uh. With the initiative. So what is that, one eighty, what is, uh, forty? Four eighty divided by one eighty? Two point six. Definitely, no, no, forty, myself. Don't give him odds, yep, 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 yep. Alright, so, how many forties, one, two, three? One, two, three, four, four eighties. One, three sixty. One, four hundred, yeah, alright, so four eighty, let's go. Nine ball, checking a ten, so see how close they were? You made it even closer than nine, super close.
I'm gonna be a little suspicious, it, when a really skittish razor fold reg limps in there, I think that's the time to hit the brakes. If you said raise to three sixty, four hundred or four eighty, I normally love those moves, uh, because. You want to play big pots in position with better hands versus opponents who are playing too many hands, right? Who, opponents who play too many hands is the big part of that formula. Most of null limit hold'em is getting heads up with a guy who's playing too many hands, letting him miss the flop and then picking up the pot when you see that, right? Now, we have no idea as to villain fours range right now, because this is a new move. So I think it's better to check. So we do check. And we get a lead on this board, now here, do you wanna fold, call, raise to four hundred and twenty K or raise to five hundred and forty K?
Interesting, 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 folding top pair on a wet ass board, calling, pushing him off, we're gonna make him show us a spade. What do we do? Look at the call streaming in, Fallon, Fallon couldn't get the call in fast enough. I am on team call too, we don't wanna raise this and get re-raised, we don't have any way ahead or way behind. Um, yeah, I'm with you, all of you. Army's on point on this one, absolutely. Call, let's go, see what happens.
I think it's a little too early to fold now, I, I think call is the correct play. If you raise, it, it's hard to raise for value, because. Well, you're, you're, you might be getting value from the king of spades, I don't know about Jack ten, it's obviously it's hard for him to have a weaker ace. So I think raising a four twenty would be the, probably the least, the worst raise. Raising a five forty does have an odd value to it, which is. If this guy is skittish, if you raise on this board, it looks a lot like a flush and you're turning your hand into a total bluff. But I don't think that's a bad thing, because if this guy's gonna sit here with an ace ten and not know what to do. And fold, I, I think you're fine, I, I applaud that a lot more than. Raising to four twenty or fo- folding, I, I think that actually raising on these boards, I do think has a lot of value. I think if this guy was just limping kings, queens, jacks, tens, that. He is, uh, very likely to fold those if you raise there, unfortunately. I- if he was limping ace five, ace six, ace seven, maybe even ace ten, there's a chance he'd fold. Because he has, we remember the beginning, when we've pushed back before, he has let go. But I think the better play is to call. So turn is the ten of diamonds and he leads out four hundred and fifty thousand. So here, do you wanna fold, call, raise to one point one million or raise to two point two million?
Uh, so it's not way ahead, way behind spot here, he could have the draw, if he's got like king, queen with a spade, for example. Um, so the nut draw, we are sixty-two, thirty-seven, so pretty decently ahead. Pretty decently ahead. Alright, so homeboy bets two thirds pot. Fold, fold, double, double, bubble, whoa, go. Uh, one, two, three folds, three calls, four calls, side call. Fold, hate to say it, but fold. Uh, see what he does in the river, yeah, this is a. It's a mix, guys, it's a tough spot. Beats is a calling station, I would do this with all of my bluffs, if I was in villain four seat. Because it's really uncomfortable for hands, just like this, right? Because it's really uncomfortable for hands just like this, right? It's super tough. Um. I also feel like the average ten dollar player doesn't double barrel this like they should. So that's kind of making me lean toward fold a little bit, uh because I think the average ten dollar tournament player isn't gonna barrel twice. Even though I would. I know like savages like Fallon, savages like ginger. Call the two three minutes river? True, except. I wonder if he value town ourselves, like I, this is where I'm like, does king queen with the king of spades barrel twice here? Or do they go check call, check call and try and realize? God, I'm I'm leaning toward fold, but I would, I mean, I understand the call for sure. It's a really tough spot. Could have like jacks, queens or kings with a spade? Definitely could. Again, those hands are, I I would think are more likely to check call and try and realize their equity and not bet, bet and turn their hand into a bluff. With the ace out there specifically, it was like, I don't know, eight, nine, four spades and they were doing that. That would seem a little more plausible for the jacks, queens and kings. Although they they limped pre, right? So we could take jacks, queens and kings out of the range. Quite a bit, right? So he's more likely to gonna have a better ace, a flopped flush. A hand like maybe jack ten with a spade. That makes sense. I think that's kind of range. King jack with a spade, sure, makes sense. Do they bet twice? Yeah, could the ten pick up on the turn? Yeah, I could see that one, pal. That's definitely a good uh, a good combo, absolutely. The angle level increases, yeah, something good. I mean, like I said, I would bluff my whole range here, but I don't think most ten dollar players are doing that. Uh he never limped, so he's super nutted. Uh could have lent to induce a raise though pre-flop. I guess he could. So the question there is like, how aggressive has Alex been? Has Alex just been pummeling, pummeling in? Three betting and 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 now he's limping the trap? Maybe. Most people just fucking raise basically all pairs heads up, right? Like, they're just doing that, especially tens plus. Like, they're just so few people limping in this spot. Now, where he might live to, like in a spot like that, Oki, is let's say like, you know, our stack is such where it's like. I don't know, fifteen, sixteen blinds or less and we might jam?
Sure.
Absolutely. That's why I checked, we get some free. Except if we go bet, bet, we have a better idea of where we are, right? Cause if we go bet, bet and this fucker's still here. We've narrowed his range more. Here, like I said, I would do this on my bluffs, but I don't know the disguise. Maybe kick him with a spade or quickly with a spade. Again, limping pre, I don't think so. Um I would fold. Uh I don't hate you for calling. Let's see, uh. Just raise the two point two million, YOLO. F this guy. Show me the nuts. Uh alright, let me think, uh let me see what we got here. We got, I think a shitload of calls. You guys are calling. I think I would fold. Let's see what happens.
What is the most important thing to think of here? If you are considering calling, what is the most important thing to think of here? It's. You clearly have a hand that cannot stand another barrel, so the really important question is, how often does he bet this river? He has never limped in before and he just limped in. Ace, eight, nine, pretty scary board, he let out, we called. The turn is the ten of diamonds and now he's leading bigger. Again, this is a guy we've never seen limp before. All of a sudden, he's limping and now he's coming out with big barrels. I think you're gonna see a river bet quite often. Now, I'm gonna say something here that's gonna sound really confusing, but.
Too like if we had a hand like, shit, he checked, didn't raise it. So that limits our hands too. Cause I'm gonna say, if I had a hand like ace jack, I'm gonna obviously call it. If I somehow raise this pre and then he led into me somehow or something. I guess about what I'm saying is if I had ace with a better kicker and I beat more ace X hands, then I could see calling. When we have ace three, we don't beat any other ace X hands. But that's the big problem here.
For just a second, it it makes a lot of.
Nice sweet summary with Alex.
I think call right now would be fine if the hand would end. But because you have to play a river. I think you're barely ahead of this guy's range, since we have no idea what to do on a river and I think there's a bad coming most of the time. I think this is a fold. I think this is a very mature fold. I think we have a very strange hand versus this guy. We've, remember I said at the beginning, we we're having. It every time we push on him, he goes away, right? So all of a sudden, he limps in, he's being a little coy. I think he wants us to push back. That's a very ten dollar MTT thing, right? Now, he might just have us here, but even if he's bluffing, let's say he has the king of spades, jack and uh diamonds, he's got a lot of outs. I, this kind of like nitty or kind of up in his head rag, I don't think he's leading anything we beat. Right? But what you'll see ninety nine percent of the time at one of these ten dollar final tables is the guy calls here and. The river comes, think of all the cards that are bad for you. A jack, a six, a spade. And then the hero has no idea what to do and hero calls, loses all of his money or hero folds. And he knew the river bet was coming most of the time, because this, this guy is all of a sudden. Trying the most basic move in the book, like, alright, you've been raising me a ton. Oh, I hope you don't raise when I limp here. Even though I've never limped before. All of a sudden, okay, crap, he didn't raise. Alright, bet big, this is scary. If he bluff, if he bluff, it's fine enough. Again, tr- here's the other thing, if you're gonna call here, give him a hand you beat.
What is?
Give him, gi- give him a hand you beat.
Shitty equity.
King jack? He's not doing that with jacks, queens or kings. Se- I guess sevens? But would he leave that on the floor? It's hard, king of spades, queen of die, it's. E- even the hands we're hoping for are not very many combos and they have a ton of equity against us. So I think the mature play is to fold. Now, let's talk about the other options. If you said raise to uh one point one million. There are times.
Uh Joe, kings with the king of spades probably doesn't do this either, because they don't wanna get raised. Either, and they don't wanna value town themselves against an ace, right? So unless they're gonna go three line with the kings, with the king of spades and they're trading kings, a hand that strong into a bluff, so they tend to not do that.
Times, let's say you have a guy who's just kind of nutty. And you think he's limping like eight, four there and he's just barreling out there. You can raise to buy the showdown, that is a move. If you don't think the guy has a bluff, which is very normal at ten dollar tournaments. So one point one actually has some merit, but I think it's misapplied in this situation. Two point two is you just turn your hand into a total bluff. You believe this guy does not have the flush and you think he is so skittish. That he's gonna bet fold like ace eight here or ace jack or uh. He's probably not bet folding as that, but you think. That could work. That that play makes more sense theoretically. Than it, I think it does in practice. I I think it's much better fold here and I I just really don't like call. I really like this fold, because I see people get really lazy with their turn calls and then nobody folds on the river. But e- e- everybody finds a way to talk themselves into a river call, so it, I can't. Let my students get lazy on a turn call, because I know that's gonna mean a river call and guess what? The game is over at that point. This was just a crappy situation. If you could end the hand right now, now I tell you to call, but you couldn't, so I think it's a fold.
Cool. Uh let me get back to the chat here, cause there was a couple things. Uh Philly said, sometimes I feel like people overthink different situations. Uh sometimes even if we make the right decision, you get bad luck, but that doesn't matter. The luck part doesn't matter. Uh long term, you just wanna make the right, solid, plus EV, sound decisions. Or exploits with a legitimate, with enough science behind it to make the exploit make sense. And if you keep doing that over and over and over again, the short term luck doesn't matter. Long term, as long as you put volume in and have bankroll management, that will work out for you and you will make money. So that is definitely a mindset thing there. That I think we need to kind of tweak a little bit. Um thirty points, read the cat, he's a savage, killing this assassin auto quiz, my man. Um that was a great cartoon, by the way. I love that shit. Um talked about the Fallon being mature, which was awesome. F this guy. Talk about the kings, um raise to my showdown way overhead. Yeah, so basically you raise here, because if you raise here, if he does have an ace without, doesn't have spades. He's always gonna call your raise, check wherever, right? He can't, he's like, oh, you turn the tables on him, but probably not a great spot turn. Top pair to bluff here, like Fallon said, always bad, always bad. I feel like a lot of times, a lot of events, people don't try and read people enough. They just try to read the table. I like to make people uncomfortable by looking at them. Um sure. There's some of that. I like to make people uncomfortable by betting the shit out of them. And then you can watch them. I mean, for me, like. I was telling you those guys before, like me versus six, a six is a small bet death by thousand cuts guy, and I make you shit yourself. And then once your shorts are full of shit, you're really uncomfortable and you're gonna make a mistake. And first thing is to get you uncomfortable. And once you're uncomfortable. Make you have to get a new pair of shorts. Alright. Uh what time is it? We got time for more. Let's do, let's do more. Call turn and make bill and bear robbers. Sure, it was good, except he's gonna barrel a lot when you all the hoops hit on us, right? And even a lot of hands that he bets flop, bets turn with like that, still have us beat like every other ace X. You know what I mean? Um so basically, like I said, with the shit kicker, with the three man, like, we don't beat any other aces. And we could be just dead to the flush, right? If we had somehow on this weird scenario, we were in a similar flop situation and we had an ace with a good kicker, you know, jack or better. Well then, and maybe not, yeah, on this board, jack or better would work. Um then there's worse ace X hands. Um even on this board though, that's a little awkward too, right? Because it was ace, eight, nine, ten, right? So like ace eight, ace ten, ace ten, I'll have two pair. So again, it's ace seven or better um that we beat. That is doing that and the ace spades is already out there, so it'd be ace seven with the seven of spades. We're getting murky, man. Uh we just don't beat any other aces. The old curse and fold. Not to be confused with the old curse and call, they both exist. They both exist. Who was that? Uh Garner, thank you for the follow, welcome, welcome. Uh but also as glues, I don't think the villain has that many bluffs, you know, uh I really don't. Cause again, the ace, I think the ace of spades makes a big difference. I think people are less likely to bet the board with the ace and then bet it twice. Uh because we have so many ace X in our range that we're just never folding. This one we happen to fold, but there's a ton of other aces that were just never fold, right? Um. That's why I think people are less likely to bluff that. However, it was like eight, nine, four with the ten on the turn or something. Sure, they have a lot more bluffs. Uh because they can get ace highs to fold and other shit to fold, absolutely. Well, the ace out there, I think that does make it. I said I was done when he left, uh should have raised pre, easier to play. Alright, let's pick another. Uh we did the assassin auto. All these blank in-betweener ones are assassin auto heads up ones. Uh what about Jack nine suited? No, against Martha, indeed. Farmer, thank you for the follow as well. Guys, if you haven't the follow button, please, please, please do so. Ready? Heart shaped icon, right about there, so on your screen, click that follow button. We are doing a study session stream. We do this every Saturday, no delay. Today it's just me, you know, I got my partner, crazy sixes, we do it together. It's the holidays, so he's doing the family thing right now. We generally do it, um pokercoaching.com, exclamation point, P C in the chat for the pokercoaching.com content. There's the link for you. You can sign up for free. Get twenty five free quizzes, a bunch of homeworks. Charts for you to use at, all for free. Look at the schedule of free webinars multiple times a week. There are coaches on there that we admire and we enjoy, like Matt Affleck, Jonathan Little, Lexi Gavin, Tristan Wade. Crazy Sixes, myself, Evan Jarvis, Alex Fitzgerald. We are all on there with content. Um all doing webinars and these quizzes and there's homeworks that we haven't even touched, that you guys haven't seen. There's a ton of content. Uh it's like this, it's interactive, it's fun. When you do these and you get these scores. Um just by doing them, you unlock other quizzes and other homework stuff that you can do. So it kind of made it like a game for you to study, so to unlock more stuff to study, so that you can get better, to unlock more stuff to get better. More stuff to get better. So exclamation point C, there's that. You can sign up for the premium as well. Uh with that, you get over six hundred plus quizzes and heaps of homeworks and all this good stuff. Black Friday sale going on right now. We gotta do the whole sales pitch right now, real quick. There's the Black Friday link right there for you. There's tons of deals. I think it's eighty some percent slashed. On prices for the courses, uh individual courses themselves, the premium memberships, annual, monthly and all that jazz. All there for you. There are the links. Check it out. Also, I always record these streams, whether it's me and sixes or me by myself. Always, always, always record them. Put them up on the YouTube channel. The link just came up automatically. So that's that. If you ever wanna go back, check up all the ones we've ever done and just uh get better. Check that shit out. Alright, there's the spiel. Let's kick off this quiz and uh get back to work.
Today we have another hand from uh Venetian sixteen hundred dollar day two. In this hand, we have jock nine of spades in early position. We're playing about forty two big blinds. Should we fold? Call? Raise twenty five hundred or raise to three thousand?
Pop Genius is John Muldoon's poker coaching website. It is, it's pokercoaching.com. Well, it is. Fallon says raise, how much, Fallon? Poker.com, I am a content creator for them. Uh mid raise, is that an option? Ish, it is an option, ish. Fold. Uh I'm on team fold two. It's early position. Um it's a medium strength hand. If I was somewhere near middle-ish position. I would be on team mid raise with Fallon all day. Beats a twenty five hundred, minish. Three K for Marlon. Never folding this hand. Of course not. Should be. Button cut off, hijack, lowjack, under the gun two, I do this. Even limping is short. Ooh, I think he might be playing too many hands, pal. Definitely fold, weak wreck, has position, yeah. Uh jack ten, yes. Jack nine, no. Jack ten suited, yes, absolutely. Jack ten offsuit, no, no. I say I don't think you fold it. That's a good, that's good. Do play way too many hands. Do, do. Uh alright, uh I would fold. Uh definitely not calling. We got a lot of folds, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, six folds. I don't see like, it would be one thing too, if like, it said something like that weak wreck was in the blinds. And we could raise here and uh. Get heads up, you know, with a weak player in the blinds, I would do it. Marlon says it's open. You need to make me check some charts, huh? You gonna make me check? Alright, Marlon. I'll call. You're on forty two bigs. So let's say, this range and we are under the gun two. Nope, jack ten suited. Now, let me say this too. If the chart says jack ten suited, you're opening jack nine suited, it's not the end of the world, by any stretch of the imagination. Apocho, just rip it. All in, all in. All in, all in. All in, all in. All in, all in, all in. Uh, day two of sixty-nine, don't expect to get three bet a lot, Wisco. Um, I don't know about that as much as, uh, wait, look at stacks here. I'm twenty-five bigs, forty, 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 forty. So I don't think it's necessary that we're gonna get three bet a lot. I just think we're again in a weird out of position spot with a weird medium strength hand. Definitely open forty-two, she says. Uh, not on my terms. Uh, but like I said, it says Jack ten suited, if you're opening Jack nine suited. It's not the end of the world. If you're opening Jack seven suited, I would say two lose. Uh, alright, cool. Let's check it out. Uh, you guys all open it, I'll, I'll go with the team. Twenty-five hundred seems good. Uh, three thousand, Marlon. Uh, the one thing I would say at that is. If we were deeper, three thousand makes sense. Uh, you know, if you're sixty, seventy, eighty bigs deep or more, you wanna go a little larger. We are forty-two bigs, uh, better than minis. Your chart says open, like I said, it's off by a tick. Um, so we're splitting hairs. Splitting hairs. Raise twenty-five.
I think this is a hand I always raise in early position. The suited nines are kind of the worst hands that I'll be raising from this early position, so. Jack nine suited, queen nine suited, king nine suited, so.
They do.
I do raise here always, and my standard size here will be twenty-five hundred. I like to raise smaller from early position, and so I'm always raising the twenty-five hundreds here. Uh, you can raise to three thousand. I think that's fine too. I don't do any limping from early position, but I s- and, uh, folding, if you aren't comfortable post flop, can be okay as well. We raised the twenty-five hundred. The button calls, who's a weaker recreational player on a big stack. And we see a heads up flop, which comes queen five, four. Two diamonds and one club. Should we check? Bet twenty-eight hundred, bet forty-five hundred, or bet seven thousand?
Alright, here we go. Check, bet, bet, bet. Uh, what are you out there? New charge from PC. Uh, those are actually the razor edge shots that I was looking at. But even still, like I said, if it's off by one tick, we're split hairs. And when you're off by one tick, you should have enough of a post flop edge, like we were talking about before, to make up for the one tick. So there you go. Uh, so when you raise, bet forty-five hundred into eight K, says the twenty-eight hundred from. Doctor Hand, Delacy Bet says bets twenty-eight hundred. Third pot says Mrs. Fallon. Joe says twenty-eight hundred, forty-five hundred, all day, forty-five hundred. Yeah, I mean, I'm with Fallon on this one for sure. Third pot for me. Uh, we're bluffing, he's got a queen or diamonds, or he doesn't have anything at all. Uh, we have to see that. Uh, we have to see that because we have no equity. We have to see that. We have no showdown value. Um, so we have to try and take it down now, we have to. Um, that being said, we have to have a plan too. So I can already tell you. When I see about this, I already know what cards I'm betting on the turn. I'm betting any king, any ace, any diamond. Ten, I'm probably check calling, cause I have a lot of. He's got total queens in his range? Sure. We've got a ton of other shit too, right? Just weak wreck calling from the button. We're gonna find out, see that. Well, we can't just check. Yeah, agreed. Agreed, Dr. Green, agreed. Checking is a joke for sure, agreed. We have no showdown, we have lots of bad. A backdoor equity, agreed. Alright, so we all receive that, uh, twenty-eight hundred for sure. See a reason to go bigger. Um. However, if I had a queen, I would go bigger. Cause now I want to get called by weaker queens and flush draws, and those are calling free press. Uh, maybe some like the ace wheels with an ace diamond or something. Uh, but here, I think twenty-eight hundred, drag, let's check it out. Ooh, he likes to check.
Uh, if you've come to watch me butcher every single decision point in a hand, this is probably the spot you wanna be. Um, I think checking is the best option here. When you're playing these flat callers in position, they almost always have a stronger raise. Range than your opening range. Um, even though they didn't three bet you, so they don't have the top end stuff. They just have a way more condensed range of stronger hands. So this button player's gonna have just a lot of suited connectors, a lot of pocket pairs, a lot of broadways. And really, none of those hands are probably folding to a bet. Um, all their suited connectors almost are gonna have a. Straight draws, and the ones that don't are gonna be like nine, ten suited and nine, eight suited. And we don't want those hands to fold, cause we dominate them. And then all these Broadway hands, queen, queen, king, queen, queen, jack, flop strong top pairs. Or the other broadways have strong blockers to the queen, so they might raise because they have good blockers to our top pairs, so. I think checking is the best option. Twenty-eight hundred, I think is the next best. We're just trying to fold out some like pocket deuces, pocket threes, um, ace, seven of spades, ace, seven of hearts. Um, not having a club in our hand sucks too. We don't block the backdoor flush draw float, so in general, I think we should just be checking here. I do bet twenty-eight hundred, which is okay, but I just don't think we have good blockers for it. In position calls, turn us to king of diamonds. Should we check? Bet forty-five hundred, bet nine thousand, or bet fifteen thousand?
Uh, Fallon, I a hundred percent agree with you. I love Mason Matt Affleck, and I think he's a great player, and he's a great guy. I wholeheartedly disagree. We have zero equity. We have no showdown value, we have to bet. And then we get to bet this turn, and, uh, life is good. Just that easy. Um, I think that's way better, Fallon. I agree with you. A hundred percent, in my humble opinion. Hold nuts, what's up, buddy? You took down the seven K again. What? Fist bumps, buddy. Uh, they're crushing it. My man, that's like, what, three top threes in a couple of weeks? It's crazy. That is crazy. We gotta change that one to the hold of nuts invitational. Uh, king in our range, but it is, I step on. See, the problem is now, we have no idea where we are. Um, that's the problem. And so now we're just gonna lead out with the gut shot and hope he doesn't have a king or diamond. Uh, versus we bet the flop, now we get the bluff and rep, king, queen, and ace, king. And the diamonds, and so when we check, we just, we're out here in no man's land. Um, that's why I wholeheartedly disagree, uh, with the check here. With all due and much respect. Uh, no way he's checking his flush draw. How deep are we? Sure, I agree. If we were both deep, I would disagree, but, uh, he's deep and we're medium, so yeah, I can, I can kinda see that. The man bet the flop, he didn't. He should have, in my opinion. He disagrees. Biggest score ever, Nats. What? My man. Double fist pumps. Oh, whoa, 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 hang on. Booyah. To army, my man. Way to go, buddy. Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Alright, depends on his flating range, pre, how loose is he or tight? So it's a weaker reg, so I would say he's got all suited connectors. Some suited gappers, like six, eight suited and things like that, and then all paint suited and not. And then most pairs, not super big ones, cause he probably raises those, right? I mean, that's generally the range, pretty darn wide. I'm definitely on team check. Uh, betting on type of sopranos. Everyone giving hold nuts, the, the, the juju. Hate single, uh, yeah. Why do I know that name? I think he's tough, right? He's super aggro, right? I believe I recognize that screen name as being like super, super aggro. Both of them putting out nine K, uh, cool. Uh, see, again, had I bet the flop, like I think we should have, me and Fallon betting the flop, I think we should bet the turn. Here, I would think I'd check. Um, so, we got all this shit going on, check, check, check. Alright, I'm gonna say check, and we'll see how it goes, cause this hand's already getting off the rails of weird, in my opinion.
I think we have a pretty clear check here. Um, this weaker rec's called our flop bet. Turns to king and diamonds. No reason to believe that. Button couldn't have flushes. We don't have any good blockers to the flush. Um. I think checking is the best option. We could definitely bet to get hands like pocket sixes through jacks to fold, but. Not having a diamond in our hand, all those pocket sixes through jacks, if they have a diamond with them, they're gonna peel one more. So then we kind of put ourselves in a spot where we might need to fire a third barrel to get like sevens, seven of diamonds to fold. So checking, I gave a score of ten. Uh, if you're gonna bet, I think you need to bet pretty large. Um, nine thousand, I don't think the small bet gets anything done, and you don't wanna really overbet here fifteen thousand, because. In position, in position could just have any combination of two cards that make a flush. We bet nine thousand. Here, I'm just trying to fold out like medium pocket pairs. Um, and club draws, like. Eight, seven of clubs, those types of hands, I'm trying to get to fold. But they, they make up such a small portion of the range, I don't think it's worth the larger bet. In position calls. River is the queen of spades. Should we check? Bet twelve point five K or go all in?
Um, fuck, I got distracted and don't know what the damn action was. Refresh my memory. We checked. And he checked, cause we certainly didn't check call, right? But the pot is weird, so raised. No, he must've checked off. What happened? I missed it. Somebody filmed me, and I got distracted by the check, I tell you. Uh, we bet and the villain called. God, this is so strange. Close your eyes and bet twelve point five. Alright, that helps, thank you. Um, Wisco. You only get called by better, so you. He bet nine thousand, thank you, thank you. All in, maybe even, clean combo is reduced, yes. Laffy says I should check flop because no real equity. I'm just bluffing too much. Um, I think if you're gonna open this hand and check a flop like that, you probably shouldn't open it. Uh, but then I would say Laffy is also kind of in that. Um, Crazy Sixes category where he opens a lot of small pots pre-wide and it's death by a thousand cuts, right? Not plays people post, and that's where he gets all his juice. Um, so I definitely think that's part of his style preference too. Ha, so this is so much fun. I forgot to come on a text, Fallon. Uh, guys, we do this every Saturday, so make sure you tune in and come back. They do fold so much, and when we do get flattered, we still get a bunch of barrel cards. Fallon, like, this is a great barrel card. And then when the queen comes on the river, we can just check. Give up at that point, cause everything got there and you called two bets. Uh. Here, when I bet and get called, like I. But here's my problem, like, what queens do we check the flop with and then go bet back? So like, we don't have any queens in our range. You know? Um, we also have no showdown value, which makes me feel like we have to bet. I think a rec will call the king, but they will fold with all their missed diamonds and all their. Hands like ace, ten. Block ace, jack. I was gonna say ace highs, but still beat us. Like, we still lose the ace highs. They also fold hands like. Pocket eights, pocket nines, pocket tens, pocket sevens, pocket sixes, things like that. Um, I would bet. I would absolutely bet. I'm betting twelve five. Check next hand, it's beats. I disagree. Um, also would not check and leave turn. I think this hand kinda went off the rails. Uh, see bet flop, bet turn, so much easier, check give up river. So much easier. Uh, one hand would have a missed diamond in it. Uh, ace X with a diamond, right? Cause they called with the wheel, and then picked up a diamond on the turn. Ace diamond seven, there you go. Ace two, ace three with a diamond. Uh, would we triple, had we bet flop? No, because if I bet flop and then I'm gonna bet flop small like Fallon did, thirdish. And then I'm gonna bet the turn relatively big, somewhere between two thirds, sixty percentish. And then by that time, I think he's either got a queen or diamonds or a king or something, and we just, you know, we narrowed his range at that point. I don't know where the fuck he is. He could have ace five, he could have ace four, ace five, ace two, ace three, ace seven. He could have jack ten, which we can maybe push off a split. Uh, we could have pocket eights, pocket sevens, pocket sixes. I really have no, I was put the diamond, have no idea where the hell. Fallon, that's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. I don't know what to do in this spot. Cause I would never be here. I bet flop, bet turn. So I agree. Uh, as played, we have no showdown value, bet the damn turn. Well, pray you save some anxiety. There's some truth in that, or if you're gonna play post, you gotta see about the board or don't play. Uh, we do block Jack ten. Good, good point, Fallon. Alright, so I'm gonna say we have to rep it. Um, let's go with rep it and see what happens. But he likes to check. He played this hand really weird.
Here, I think we just have a pretty easy give up, checking a score of ten. We have no reason to not believe. The imposition player cannot have a flush. The imposition player can have four houses. They can have strong hands, like give you ace, king, they could have trip queens now. So, yeah, with. We don't have any like blockers to any of those hands. We don't even block queen, jack suited or queen, nine suited now with the queen of spades coming, so. Checking, I think is the superior option. If you're ever gonna bluff here. You probably should be shoving for just over pot, because you're representing a really strong range. So betting small doesn't make a lot of sense. We checked. Villain bet twenty thousand, refold, probably had a flush, maybe a full house, king, queen, could have ace, queen still. Yeah, we butchered that hand, so I hope you enjoyed it.
I agree that he butchered that hand. I love. Yes. I love it. We butchered his hand. I hope you enjoyed it. Agree. I feel so bad, buddy. Mad at him when you watched the replay, my friend. That is funny as hell. And conversely, if I was playing, um, in general. I would definitely bluff. If I had to Jack ten and you checked the river, like. He never has a flush, he never has a boat, he should probably not have a queen. Like, fuck, man, I am bombing it just like this, with a little everything. Just, there's the exploit right there. Checking is great when it flops well. Sure. Sure. Now, does he advocate us playing this hand or not under gun? It's really close. I don't think the under the gun two or whatever was open. Is the biggest part of the discussion here. I think it's close. Um. And I think opening is okay, but I think if you open it and you get a board like this, you have to fire it prior return, in my opinion. Um, so it's not about the pre-flop action as much as is. Playing post is, is more important, having the skill edge, and playing post flop is where the vast majority of the money is made in this game. It's being able to take hands and get maximum value from your good hands and lose the least with your medium hands. And then also, you know, so much of poker is sixty, forty, fifty, fifty, fifty-five, forty-five. It's all right here. And if you're only playing. Good hands, you know, and you're only playing against good hands, you're always gonna be doing this. You know, break even, slightly up, slightly down, always. It's about taking those pots you're not supposed to win. And then getting max value from the hands that you do win. You start to make that big gap, and that's where the money is. Um, it's all about post flop, in my opinion. Alright, guys. Uh, hey. Sadly, we've come to the end of our time together. It's time for me to go get breakfast with Mrs. Toe and Little Toe. And then maybe even play some O S S. I may be back streaming, I haven't decided yet. Um, I gotta see what the schedule looks like, but. I will absolutely be back online tomorrow for Big Sunday with all the big buy-ins. Chasing all the dreams. And, uh, yeah, so make sure you tune into that. Hit the follow button if you haven't done so already. Uh, like I said, the replay for this is going to be on YouTube, so check out the replay on YouTube. If you missed the beginning of this, if you like these so much. You'd like to go back and check out everyone we've done in the past, both myself and with Crazy Sixes, check those out. Also, uh, P C dot com, if you'd like to sign up and get some of these quizzes to take on your own time. There it is. Uh. And get the homeworks and get the pushfold charts, or if you'd like to sign up for the premium. Also, there is a giant Black Friday sale going on. Here's the link for that. Uh, with up to like eighty-seven percent off, uh, going until, uh, December first. So time is short on the Black Friday sale, if you decide to pull the trigger. I appreciate you all. Thanks for the good juju. Thanks for everything, guys. Uh, I'm glad you made it to Fallon. This is super fun for me. I really enjoy them. Um, I enjoy doing them too. We'll be back next week with Crazy Sixes. And, uh, there you go. Thank you for those bits, Mike Cash. Good to see you, homie. Thank you for the bits, Wisco. Uh, we gotta throw the host over to somebody, right? Who we throwing the host over to? Let me click refresh real quick. And it looks like it's going to be Mrs. Kammers. So check out Kammers, get on that A C R. See you later today. Definitely see you tomorrow. Definitely see you tomorrow. Peace.